Actually, you want me to open it?
Yeah.
I thought you opened it with.
I can open.
I have it, right? You go through the door, do you even know what?
No.
I'm trying to.
That's what I did.
It's.
I mean, yes.
Well, I'm totally like. Reconsolidating it. My words, you want that fucking for there?
One of these days, I'm gonna accidentally knock out the cowl or something.
I thought that's what happened during family reunion, but it turned out being a bolivar.
Oh, no.
We were like, did a child turn?
Welcome, everyone. We'll call the meeting order. We just exited a non-public session under RSA 93, sorry, RSA 91 dash eight, column three, two parentheses D for the sale of property regarding Shed Street. Is there anything that we have to do now?
No decisions.
I don't.
Any questions?
Shut up.
It's an hour.
Yeah. No, no decisions were made. And.
It was the sale of what?
Oh, regarding the sale of the Shed Street property.
Okay. That's what they're really with about.
You guys, and that blower is terrible. So if you might feel free to move to the front seats, it's really hard.
Okay. We will start with the approval of minutes from June 17, 2024.
And I thought, as usual, they look very nice, and I move that we accept them as presented.
Seconds.
Excuse me, I noticed a little bit out of order. Can I make the comment?
Yes.
Line number 234 going on to line 235. It says, he, meaning me, also shared that he learned that there are state programs to aid with the funding of this. I don't think I said that, however, I have the note to best speak at times. What I meant to say was there may be state or federal programs.
Okay, can you just check that in the recording? And we'll get it.
Thank you.
We'll get whatever you have.
His name.
Yes.
Are there other comments from zone? Do we have a, so have a motion and we have, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Okay, board reports. Hello.
Uh, the. Heritage Commission met this past. Week. And um. They're making a plan for discussing a partnership with the planning board at their meeting this week and really enthusiastic looking forward to that.
We are sorry, but it is hard to hear you. Should we move up or?
Yeah, why don't you?
And I'm, and I'm a youngster.
And we're not.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's terrible. That blower is awful, and you know it.
One of us to go. I want to take someone, you want to move up a little first? I have trouble hearing like.
There's one will be up to here.
Sorry.
I was just commenting on the last Heritage Commission meeting.
The last Heritage Commission meeting. All right.
Yeah, and I, I think you meant this month. I think it's the second meeting of July. Oh, first meeting, look, it's the 10th. Eric, this meeting will have a joint meeting with the planning board. Okay, and Brad's nodding that that's the correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
And the Shaker Seven happened. That was awesome.
The Shaker Seven did, oh, thank you. The Shaker Seven did happen. It was a success. We are going to be having a debriefing meeting Wednesday, talk about improvements for next year, and we have, um. Yeah, just like so grateful to the community for supporting that event. It's really just a wonderful, it was a wonderful day.
Joe?
I have nothing to report.
Gracie?
Uh, the Energy Committee met. Basically, they'll be. Providing some additional educational materials in the near future as far as the use of some discretionary funds are concerned, and also there was a discussion of rates. The new rates coming out for the six months following will be certainly lower than the current providers. And once again, Community Power will provide the lowest possible rates as compared to all competitors throughout our service areas.
Gracie?
Okay. Conservation Commission meets once a month, and normally that would be this coming Thursday, but it's the Fourth of July, so we are not meeting on Thursday. I think we were angling towards July 18th. And that's, I was gonna pick on you. Thank you.
But the July 11th. The cemetery community is actually scheduled to meet here that night, but they're not gonna be here. They said that they're going to uh.
Be moved the 18th. Okay, cause.
Cemeteries.
Cemetery is going.
Cemetery tour. So we can meet here that time.
Cemetery tour is on the 18th.
They have moved their meeting to the 18th.
Okay, I was gonna say, because that was a conversation I was rigid about this space.
Well, they're not gonna be in 11th.
Okay, so right now it's not posted.
Oh.
So that is why I still. Yeah, so.
I can get that done.
Follow up and get that posted. I'm not picking on anybody. I've just, I know we've been trying to move it around and find rooms. Obviously, we're short a couple of buildings currently, so. And so obviously, on the docket, we have been talking right along about all things impacting, you know, safety and natural resources in our town. And one of the things we had talked about was the septic regulation review, which is gonna be here tonight. So Shirley and I will be taking that information back to Conservation and looking forward to that discussion, and you are always welcome to come to that committee as well.
That community meets when?
It's normally the first Thursday of each month, but this month it's going to be July 11th, and we start at 7:00 PM, and we'll be here in this room. Thank you. You're welcome.
And the planning board had a meeting last week with the HOPE grant, the housing grant around zoning. They presented the initial public survey and form summaries, and particularly relevant to this group and tonight, there was some, some good discussion around stormwater and impervious surfaces and runoff and, and the zoning aspect to protecting water quality. And um. A couple folks pulled up, we didn't have time to really review and discuss them, but there are, there's a state model of zoning that's being sort of put forward, and then some towns have already put forth drafted or adopted versions. So the, the planning board is starting that discussion as well, of whether there's a, there's a zoning piece to water quality management within town and slowing off. Any questions from the public, or any board reports? Town managers' report.
Well, I'm happy to announce that with the delay of the police administration position we're bringing on, that the town is now fully staffed. I don't get to say that often, so I'm, I'm happy to say that. Vinnie Vincent started last Monday as our new building inspector and health officer. He hit the ground running. It was a good find to find someone that was already holding that position, and he was able to answer questions for, for some of our builders on the first day as we toured him around town. So it was nice to see him. We're glad to have him on, and then, of course, Kayla in the police department, so.
I'll just, I think everyone in town should be really proud of this. We've been working for five, six years on staff in, in a variety of, of forms and fashions, and we've gone from having, you know, sort of six to eight empty positions at any given time to being full of staff. And, and I think the programs we've put into place, they seem to be working. So I think, I think we should all feel good about that. And I know people have commented, particularly around like DPW, doing a lot more work visibly than they've ever seen before, and that's directly related to staff. Sorry.
All right, elections are coming up. We are taking applications for inspector of elections. The parties will have a chance to appoint their inspectors, but at the next select board meeting, the select board will be appointing inspectors or alternates for that depending on open positions. So just wanted to let everybody know, we're taking those applications now. And then just to remind you guys, the primary will be held on September 10th, and we will need the select board in attendance. The plethora of projects we have going on around town are all going well. Whitney Hall continues to move forward, making good progress. We completed rough-in inspections in the renovation section of the downstairs town office part last week, so they'll be starting hanging some drywall, and it'll start to look like a new building again. So we're, we're excited about that. You guys may have seen that the roof was completed last week, so the, the shingles are on the Whitney Hall portion, and they also laid the, the membrane roof over the, the addition. So good to see that. I was pretty excited when they went through the roof, that they found very little rot under the roof, so we didn't have a lot of work to do there. We also had some concern about some mastic that may have had asbestos under there, and they really found none of that either. So it was one little spot that we found instead of being throughout the roof. So that's good news for the town. The Public Safety Building continues to move fairly quickly. They did their first concrete pour last Wednesday, and they got the majority. It was more than two-thirds of the building that they poured footings for this week, and they will be pouring the rest of the footings and one-third of the frost walls. So, so later in this month, we should have all the frost walls up and be moving forward with underground rough-in plumbing and those types of items. So that, that project just started, but it continues to move relatively quickly. Mascoma Lakeside Park, if you guys haven't been by there, is not complete, but it's most of the way complete. The parking lot's pretty much done. We have a few minor punchless items to do there, and all the plantings are in, so we're just watering stuff and trying to, trying to get it to grow right now. I did meet today with the, uh, the grant person from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and we walked through the park. Again, small handful of punchless items that he would like to see to meet some ADA standards and stuff, but nothing that's our guys in DPW can't help me rectify fairly quickly. So we'll be getting that done through the rest of the summer and then working with them to, to close out this grant and move forward.
Does that get striped?
It will get striped, yes. It's getting striped pretty soon. I talked to the contractor today, and they're planning on coming in and striping it in the middle of the night when the parking lot's not being used.
So the parking lot is open?
It is open right now.
Yes, very much open.
Full. Well, I, here's the thing, you don't know if it's open. Sometimes people just park there anyways. I wanted to know.
The barricades, and it looks great.
We had that happen a couple times during the project.
I know.
I can tell you, every contractor that's worked there has mentioned about how busy that park is. They knew there'd be people there, but it was much more overwhelming than they thought it was gonna be. Fireworks. We've had some discussions on fireworks. There's been some stuff on Facebook. I've been working with the police chief today to, to do some research. There was one Facebook post about someone doing fireworks on barges in Crystal Light. We've looked at the permitting. We got a little bit of mixed messaging back and forth, but overall, the state fire marshal said there was no permit needed for fireworks. The first person we talked to from Marine Patrol said there were no permits, and then the second person we talked to in the office said there were no firework permits, but they needed to fill out an event permit form. So we've been in contact with that owner to let them know that, and, and that's where we're at. Once they get onto the water, there's no town jurisdiction anymore, but it's a, it's a state body of water at that point. We will enforce, if needed, the, the hours that we allow fireworks in the town of Enfield, but that's about all we can do from a town perspective.
That started on that.
Permit required? I've never heard of a permit required for fireworks before, so.
If you're on the lake.
Which means?
State land.
On the water, you need a state event permit.
Okay.
And that's below the high watermark is the definition.
Got it.
Right?
Any event.
Yeah, in town, you don't need a permit at all unless you're doing non-consumer grade or commercial grade fireworks. But if you can go to the fireworks store and buy it, that's consumer grade, and you can let that out.
So if you're on a dock on the lake, do you need a permit?
You're below the high watermark, and you can.
That's really tactical, probably, probably supposed to get a permit from the state, but I would call them and ask.
Or not.
But Mascoma and Crystal both non-regulated lakes, and docks are not registered with the state. Therefore, the docks are actually part of the owner's property.
Excellent. I would still ask the state.
I think the other thing to know is, like, we, as a select board, have a lot of years of discussion on fireworks, and I just want to tell you, from my personal perspective, I went in, not, not, because I, my parents are on Mascoma Lake, so I benefited from being on Lake. And I was kind of like always, why do we have a right? Right? I'm not a big person on regulation, and now I understand it's a compromise. So I think some of this is folks jockey for position over fireworks, and they try to use varying regulations to get what they want done. So some of it's just passing on the knowledge, right? What, we have a very specific ordinance. It says the days you can do them. The Fourth of July is a Thursday. Normally, Thursday is a no, but this time it is. Friday's okay, and Saturday's okay. It's not a big old free brawl like it used to be, and that's, that's the compromise.
People, you light them off every day. If you have a problem, call the police department.
But we would all agree that regardless of the rules and the regulations, it's not good for the water quality, right? Everybody?
No.
Yes.
We had a quite a discussion last week with somebody we don't even lose bait.
All right.
Yeah.
We're off the topic here, folks.
I'll pull it back in. The, the summary here from, from ad is that the town doesn't issue fireworks permits. The state does if you're on the water. The town will enforce their ordinance. That's the summary for this.
And I wanted to let you guys know, because it's, yeah, to be the hot topic right now. So if you get a phone call, that's what it was. I'm gonna jump back to Lakeside Park. I forgot a couple things. I had placed some plaque ideas. I hand them out to you guys. Nothing to do tonight, but if you want to read over those and email me if you like one or the other or none, let me know, and we'll be moving, moving forward, getting something prepared. And then the Mascoma Lakeside Park Committee is planning a grand opening ceremony for Saturday, October 5th at 2:00 PM. It'll be about 2:00 to 3:00 PM at the park for, kind of the grand opening ceremony, if you will. To finish up my report, I have quite a few things from DPW. Cow Road, Cow Road paving is complete, and shoulder gravel has been placed, and then it looks like state paving has been moved from July to August. So those projects continue to move forward, but got pushed back a little bit. Line striping in town was completed last Friday. One thing you may see around town, you can see it on Main Street by Lakeside Park if you go down there, but DPW has been working with a sidewalk paver that they made to do some sidewalk paving. We thought that was a great place to try it out, because it's really bridging the gap between. Putting in a sidewalk that's actually walkable and a project that's soon to come. So we didn't want to spend a lot of money paving that, but they made a little paving machine, and they gave it a try. It came out pretty good. There's a little bit of ups and downs, but I think some of it's the sidewalk that they went over. And then they're also using it for shimming, and you can see some of those test spots along Lock Haven Road, if you want to drive along that.
On that line, will we be doing any more completion of that sidewalk out to the lake? Or is that?
Yeah, I stopped them because trucks and equipment was going in and out for the project.
We'll bring it at least up to?
We'll finish the sidewalk.
That point, yeah.
Soon.
Great.
So we'll be working on that, and then the actual sidewalk paving for downtown will be done by a company later this year.
I got asked the question, and I think it's a common sense problem, but are people allowed to park on the sidewalk? And I was like, gosh, no. In Boston, you get a ticket. So I told people if they see people parking on the sidewalk, to call dispatch, but I'm assuming we're not intending to make that part of parking.
Yeah, you shouldn't be parking on the parking lot. I can look into enforcing a little of that, but yeah.
The questions people ask, I'm like, no, you should not park on the sidewalk.
It's kind of hard for people to walk on the sidewalk if you're parked.
Especially if you happen to be somebody who needs a flat surface.
Yeah.
Ish, flat-ish surface.
So to continue on, Shaker Boulevard Bridge test pourings were completed, and survey work is nearing completion. The damaged light post at the corner of Main Street and Shaker Hill has been repaired and reinstalled.
What was the cause of that damage?
Think it. Car.
Pretty sure it was an accident.
It was a car. I think it was a car that hit it. Yeah.
It's been gone for a long time.
For a while.
Oh, I know it has. I was just couldn't remember.
I don't have all the fine details, but that had a specialized cast iron base that they didn't make anymore, and we actually had to have it. Made to fit, so. The Anne's Crosswalk in EBS has cleared final DOT.
I know, I watched them pour. You kidding? I stood there and watched them pour concrete.
I voice texted Ed as I drove by, and I was like, is that really our crosswalk?
Unbelievable. Two plus years. It's great. Did they pour both sonotubes, both sides, do you know?
I don't know. They're working on it.
Okay.
I don't get too involved in that, but they're going in right now.
It looked great.
Second quarter water sewer meeting reading is complete, and billing is underway. Enfield hosted a solid waste training and transfer station operations closure plan class, and then the community building floor, I'm just gonna keep saying it, is scheduled to be refinished August 5th through the 10th. So continuing to move all those projects forward as well. So like you said, DPW's been busy. They've been out and about, and very, very public work.
It was like worker ants today with them looking back at the concrete. It was, they were crazy busy, but it was good.
Yeah, they're getting a lot done.
Any questions, Fred? Any questions for Fred at this point?
Can I just ask how many fireworks can be?
10:00 PM.
And can, did I understand only on the weekend or a holiday?
Weekends, it's.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday, Saturday, and then it's Fourth of July and New Year's Eve.
No, or, we have a specific ordinance that's, that states the exact dates sometimes.
Is that in the newsletter this month, I think?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Elisa's really good at putting stuff like that in the newsletter for us.
So the Fourth of July is a rainout. They cannot do until Saturday?
They'll have Friday.
Friday, Friday is one of the permitted days.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's Friday and Saturday, because we thought, you know, blowing up the neighborhood on Sunday makes people kind of tired for Monday.
All right.
Well, boiling up, there is a cannon on Mascoma, so.
Before we go too far.
Yeah, there's a cannon.
If you would like, we can move the septic regulation forward. I think that's what most people are here for, and I asked him to join us at 6:45 for the other two items.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good. I think that would make sense, if there's no objections. As we move on to the business of the meeting, we will start with the septic regulation review and first draft. So is there a draft available for us?
I can give you one.
So Ed, John, so I put together, or somebody in the town staff put together a nice draft for us.
Yeah, so I'll kind of start back at the beginning. After, after attending the planning board meeting, where the, the lakefront owners came to talk to the planning board, it was, it was very obvious. We knew we had some water quality issues to work on, but it was very obvious that we really should, should jump on a few things right now. I think the, the climate with the people around the lake and in the town is, is right to really, really move forward. So as soon as that was over, I actually contacted Dan Regan and Bob Cusick. We started talking a little bit. I also contacted the town of Sunapee to get their regulation as it been, and we, we kind of worked back and forth and just picked some ideas around on how we can modify the regulation that Sunapee had that seems to be working well, make it a little more Enfield specific. And I've really worked, and I talked with Vinnie last week about it a little bit, trying to find a way to, to put this in place, to make something that had a little bit more teeth than the one that the town of Sunapee had, which was more of a recommendation, but not make it an administrative nightmare. And so. We had enough that I thought it was worth coming back to the select board tonight with what I will call a very early draft one that we can start talking through. I did get it to Martha Rich on the Mascoma Lake Association. I handed out an email to you that kind of gave her thoughts on it. And then I got it to Glenn Green and back to Dan and Bob, of course, to talk about. One of the things that really keen, I guess strongly recommended from the town of Sunapee as we did this was to, I'm gonna say start small, but they said, start with that 250-foot shoreline around the lakes. Of course, if you look at Martha's email and a few other people I've heard from, they said, well, what about all the tributary streams and all these things? I said, it could very easily get way too complex. So start small, see how it works, and kind of work into, to other requirements if you'd like to, or if, if you guys think you need to. So that's, that's kind of where we started to stay around. The 250-foot, I went back and forth whether we added Spectacle Pond in or not. I ended up not doing it. But is it in? Okay.
George Pond is not in there.
George Pond's not in. So those are all things we can pick around, mull over what we want to do moving forward, but just thought I'd throw a regulation out here and kind of start mulling through it, letting people talk through it. We purposely have not made this wide spread for people to read yet. We thought, you know, let's keep it small, let's talk about it, and then we can get what we think is a better second or third draft out for public comments.
This draft has gone to the Mascoma Lake Association and others, or it has not?
I sent it to Martha Rich, and she talked with her board about it a little bit. It hasn't went to a full board meeting or anything, and kind of same thing with Crystal Lake Association. I sent it to Glenn Green to look at, and a couple of the people that have helped me live on Crystal Light. But again, it went to them, but it hasn't been fully vetted and brought back.
I like having spectacle ponds. So I own almost down to the pond, in full disclosure, but I'm on the opposite side of the road. But the reason I like it is because it flows into the Gulf Brook, which flows into the Indian River, which goes into Mascoma Lake. And so it's just like everything ends up in Long Island Sound eventually. I think it's a, a good start. It's, it's got a substantial amount of development and continues to develop. And I think they're very reasonable humans. I don't, they have like a group, but I don't know if they have a formalized association. They probably should take a peek at it, too.
As we get closer, I think it would be right to send something to all the affected people. So if we decide to add George Pond, we can do that, but, you know, if we can pull a butters list, I think we can pull a list of everybody within the 250-foot setback and send it to them before a public hearing to actually enact something.
I would agree with that.
I know you mentioned it, but I would like to see fourth order streams included. I would like to see Mascoma River included. There are places along the river that are not necessarily within our septic system. And I would like to see them included. I understand, starting simple, that certainly that makes sense. But I think the regulation is written by Sunapee, which says fourth order streams, and I, I think that they should be included.
What would be an income?
Well, let's start with the river, for one thing.
Is the NOx a fourth order?
I think the NOx will be a fourth order stream.
So that would be substantial down through.
Yes.
Yes.
Because that's, for anybody who's not familiar with the NOx, that flows from George Pond down along 4A.
Exactly.
And into Mascoma Lake.
I think, I, I'm on that. I think keeping it simple to start with, just using the 250-foot from the lake setback.
And put a pin in it and see how we progress. Because I, I see this as a layer in a multi-part project of trying to promote some environmental cleanup across the entire town. So like you'd start with one layer and you keep adding until you get the outcome you want.
Are there any questions from the board before I ask a couple? I guess, I do think we should consider including George Pond. It's another large water body. I realize there's not many houses, but I think it makes sense to include George Pond on there. And then. One question regarding enforcement. I was looking through some of the RSAs, and a lot of them talk about, you know, requiring a, basically a septic design, but they don't talk about the enforcement mechanism to ensure that those are implemented. What is the, do they, let's say somebody's going from seasonal, you know, summer cottage, they're fully winterizing it. The RSAs are clear that that's, you know, an event that would trigger something of this nature, and they'd have to have inspection, but it's a little unclear exactly how. They would have to have a design done. How do you ensure that they implement that design? Is that part of the building? They would have to have a design done. How do you ensure that they implement that design? Is that part of the building, um, you know, occupancy certificate?
Actually, where in this does it require a seasonal rental conversion to be inspected?
It doesn't, no, no.
I don't think it does in here, but I do think it's required. So let me do some homework on that.
Actually, it's not, but you're, please research it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm pretty sure it is. I'll double check with our building inspector, cause Liam made sure that mine was approved. As a full-time residence before I was allowed to build.
Right. I think, I think we should get the answers to that. And because there is very clear within the building codes and the RSA's around building codes that. Like if you get a building permit to add bedrooms, you're changing the expected usage of your septic system. And you have to have an approved septic system for that additional bedroom. I just wanted to.
That one, it does not need to be installed. You just have to have a design.
The ones I'm interested in are the simple conversions that have no construction involved. In other words, a conversion from a seasonal property. To a, uh, winter property without any particular construction.
And, and that within the.
Needs to be included.
Well, and within the RSA's, that is an, we can, that can be. An event. I, I don't know the exact right terminology that would trigger it. Um. Because a change in the expected usage can be the time when this would apply.
Yeah, I mean, look.
But I, but I guess that, that's my real question. How do you?
I don't know that this is the right policy.
I, I don't either, but that's something that I think needs to be looked at.
But, but we need to look at that. We need to get through like, okay, so everybody's now got these, you know, inspections and they failed the inspection and, you know. How do you make sure that there are improvements made?
I did put an law in front of you that's going to the governor that. Changes some of that. It may be inspections and.
Yeah, and then.
Do you guys see that?
The, the other comment they have around the penalties, which are, a lot of times the penalties are simply spelled out by the statement on RSA. We do not have discretion on those. I don't know if that's the case here. Um, but it's written at a hundred dollars a month, which. I guess I think about the corner case where if the septic design they get is, you know, forty thousand dollars. Then twelve hundred dollars a year to not do that may not be, um, the right number.
I will say that penalty section, we can talk about that. If we wanna go whatever the maximum penalty is or find that out. It's usually dictated by state law. We don't get to just make up a number there.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I don't know what, and I have not read through those. I don't know what those are.
No, I usually turn that into the attorney as we're getting close to review our ordinance and then to, to work with them. But that's a discussion of, you know, if we want it steep, then we'll ask for, you know, how steep can it?
I, I would just put out there that I think that certainly for the first year of non-compliance, that sounds like a perfectly reasonable number, a hundred dollars a month. But then maybe if people aren't taking steps, that it would be progressively more challenging for them. Other than that, I think it looks very promising.
This HB, sorry guys, this HB one, um, one, 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 three, is this, it's just waiting for signature by the governor?
That's going to the governor for.
For signature. So we can incorporate that in the, in the news, whatever RSA it is.
Yeah, if we wanna write it in here.
I mean, I don't think it's bad as a reference. Like it doesn't, we don't need to incorporate, but just the reference. Always good to have more references so people can educate themselves against this.
It'll be part of a sale process. It has to be inspected at the sales. It has to be replaced.
Now, this, this should be, this should have been happening.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else from the board?
Oh, I think it's a good start.
When can we schedule it for the public hearing?
Well, let's, let's, let's get some public comment on this first. Questions from the public there. Yeah, I just, just, um, for a minute taker, please state your names before.
My name's Betty Clixter. I live on Crystal Lake Road. So I have a couple of things just about the septic. So, um, there's been several times where someone who has a home on Crystal Lake Road within that two hundred and fifty feet. Can't for one reason or another come back year after year. So are you gonna expect somebody who has not used their septic at all for two years to have to have it pumped the third year? When they're one person and they're not there?
I think you do. We talked about the, um, Sunapee has a waiver process that you can move it out to like six years. I think it's an administrative nightmare to try to do that. Just, yeah, have it looked at.
Well, what is gonna be the, the, the rules for every three years? How is that gonna be monitored? Have people, recommendation that you have it pumped every three years, right?
No, it would be, it would be a requirement.
Turn it in. You turn in proof.
So like to the town.
Yeah, you would have to turn in proof to the town and the town would keep a record of who turned it in and who didn't. And if you didn't, then they'd start the notice and then the buying process.
Doesn't it, I'm sorry, Betty, but he would raise. Doesn't it matter like the size of your septic tank or whatever? I mean, I could imagine if somebody, like I had another house in New York that I sold. My septic tank was five hundred gallons. I was a little shocked that that's what it was. We had to have it replaced before I sold it and stuff like that. Mine now is fifteen hundred gallons and I'm one person. And it's, it just, I just don't understand. Like I, first of all, I just wanna say I'm all for it. But I wanna see it treated equitably so that if you're one person and you have a two hundred, a two thousand gallon tank. Why does that have to be pumped every three years? And also, I, I had mine pumped and it was really hard to get somebody to come. John Esther live on Crystal Lake Road. Betty's making some pretty good points. Uh, somehow this ought to consider. How many people live in the, in the house? I'm thinking if one person in the house, it probably doesn't have to get pumped for ten years. And I know something about septic, so okay. So I'm curious about why it has to be a three-year number.
I think we need to pick a number and I think we need to make everybody do that, or it's gonna be an admin nightmare and it's gonna be on.
We're gonna have to have a whole department of, of septic system, analysis, inspection and consequences. And, and so, and we can't do that.
And it's not really about who lives in the house. It's about usage, right? And we don't check everybody in and out of the house. So you can have a person that's one person in a house that has a lot of visitors and suddenly you've got a significantly higher usage. We're not gonna check, you know what I mean? We can't account for every scenario. So it's finding a happy medium that's the most fair without trying to be. Cause we, we don't wanna police who's in and out of their house. We just want the lake to be safe.
But you wouldn't consider four years.
It, it's also fair to say that, it's also fair to say that a professional septic pumper is only going to charge what needs to be pumped. So if he shows up and pops the lid and he sees next to nothing there, he will say, I don't have to pump this. Or he will say, I only had to pump three hundred and fifty gallons, for example. Therefore, the charge is X as opposed to pumping fifteen hundred gallons. It doesn't matter what size the tank is, it's how much he pumps. And there's a meter on every one of the tanks. As far as the availability of pumping services are concerned, there are at least three excellent companies in this immediate area. Who are very, very responsive.
I can get mine pumped next day. Mine failed during COVID and, um, my child flushed the toilet for last time while I was in the shower. So I, I think you can get it and they charge you a fee to show up and then an adder based on what they pump, right?
I get charged only per gallon.
John Esther, you make an excellent point on that. Uh, the, this says nothing about the amount that you're pumping. So somebody can say, come in, pump a hundred gallons and they met the law. Dan, interesting.
Ian Regan, Lock Haven. So the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services recommends that we get our septic systems inspected every year. And they recommend we get them pumped every two to three years. So we're already making some acceptance here with this new ordinance. Well, also the size of your tank doesn't matter if it's leaking. It's, it is leaking, it's leaking. We need to make sure these tanks are not leaking.
Good points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Something can go wrong with your system in between. Actually, the system we have. We are required to have it pumped every other year and inspected every other year. We're happy to do that. For a good cause.
Us too.
Part of the inspection process will also, to a certain extent, verify that the leach field is functional. It's not just the septic tank. I had a summer camp originally on Mascoma. We replaced the tank. And after about two years, the field failed. So someone who comes in there will look at the tank and say, yeah, I think your tank's okay. But you have a failed field.
And that's what we need to find out.
Exactly.
So, John Esther, and it seems to me inspecting a septic system, the leach field, this can be quite an extensive job.
Actually, you can tell that information based on how well the tank is retaining the fluids that go into it. A good inspection pumper is very good at diagnosing the failure or success of a field without digging anything up.
I can't imagine how he does it.
This is John's.
Brad Rich, I just to answer your question, I had Sterns come and inspect mine. And they, they pumped the tank and then they put TV camera on a cable down each field of the, of the leach field. And it wa, it was twenty minutes and it wasn't that expensive. And then they said, okay, you, you're in a, you're, for the age of your system, you're in a, it's good shape, thing, done.
Awesome.
Did that address anything about how active the soil is and whether that's doing the job for what's going through the field? That's what we're concerned about.
That's what didn't line up. You know, they found.
So, so to some extent, right, as written, the, the inspections have to be done by a certified person. So we would be relying on their professional expertise and when they write their reports.
There you go, John, your next career.
He's already got a career in a related fields.
Yeah.
I just wanna give, Betty Clixter, I just wanna give a, for example, so I just moved here a year ago. I immediately had the septic pump because I can't remember when my mom had it done. And I had a certified guy that's on your list, because I checked with the G D O, whatever the rest of the acronym is, persons, right? And, um, that person said, five years, go five years easily. So why aren't we listening to certified septic people to make that decision?
Because we have to make a single rule that applies to every property around everywhere.
And I would say a good example, uh, everybody's gonna have a professional opinion, right? And that's why. We have different people we can hire. I just paid somebody who is an excellent engineer. I didn't pay just a septic designer. I paid an engineer. This is their background. It's been a ton of money and she still told me, and I have stone and pipe, which is not as common anymore. But I also have a huge field to put it into and very good soil hydrology. Um, and she told me still have it, the best practice is still to have it pumped every two. So here's somebody on the other end of the spectrum who, this is their profession, who said two. So I think you're gonna get a lot of different answers.
As Dan pointed out, the specific range is two to five years.
Three in the D S.
We picked the thirty year. If we wanted to go four, that's what this discussion's for, but we picked three for the Enfield.
So I would respectfully disagree with that. Uh, D E S says two to three years. New Hampshire Lakes, which is the most respective group in the, in the, in the state, says have it pumped every three years. So I don't know why this would be an issue.
And then my initial reaction for the draft is the three years is the right number.
I agree.
I think, I think it strikes, it gives.
I think it's fair. Fair.
Okay. Any other comments at this point? So further discussion from the board.
Like I said, I would comment.
Yeah, please.
Curious about why there's a two hundred and fifty foot number. It starts in fact that some other regulation.
Because that's how, uh, state D E S defines lake shore. And the lake shore regulations all apply within two hundred and fifty feet of the lake shore. So like if you wanna cut trees within two hundred and fifty feet of lake shore, you need a lake shore permit. If you wanna do basically anything. Within that range, you need a lake shore permit. So that's the, that's the logic behind the two hundred and fifty.
Protected shoreline.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And that's always taken very seriously.
Yeah, I think, um, so for me, my, I'll, I'll be obviously with Shirley going to conservation. We'll be getting sent feedback as well.
I'm so grateful you're taking this serious and it's been needed for years.
So as a, um. Path forward, I'm gonna suggest, it sounds like you've heard some feedback. We could get another draft.
Yep, we'll do a little bit of research on them.
Do, do a little bit, uh, you know, and, and may not be included in this ordinance, but at least understanding some of the follow through, like. What the, the process through to the end is, we can probably do one more round of reviewing the draft and then have a public hearing. Either late August or early September. For potential adoption. Does that sound like a reasonable path for folks on the board?
Yeah.
And the other thing for the board to think about, I think this was written, like Sunapee's to be a health order, looking forward. A health order can be enacted by the select board.
Yeah, exactly.
If you wanna go the ordinance route, it would be a town meeting type of, so it's really your guys' decision at that point of how, if you think this. So rises to the level of health order.
We can have an initial proposal on that. I, I'm of the view that this is a health order. The reason for doing this is the public health of the lakes. I think it is.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, the health order.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Stay in that direction.
Okay, so I think we're moving in that direction.
And then if we find that we need something that has different teeth or something and we need to go to the next level, fine, this takes care of the initial public health concern, which I think is significant.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? It's like a bit of a jump, but I'm not gonna go down a rabbit hole, just, um. We have a partnership with Lebanon on doing some work surrounding Mascoma Lake. Would it be appropriate to just?
My plan.
Initial conversation with them.
My plan on this, and I've actually talked to Vinnie already, is to get a little deeper in our draft, get it done. Go talk to Lebanon. And I think the small amount of homes around Mascoma Lake that's not on a sewer system, that's Lebanon residents. That we may be able to offer to just manage the program and work with them. So the paperwork comes here. And we let them push the letters and fines forward for themselves, but it's gonna be a very small amount of. Of homes and it would be very easy to manage it in one program.
Or with their plethora of employees, they may choose to do it themselves, but wouldn't surprise me if they adopted it similarly.
They might, but we can work on it. I think it would make it easier for them and we work, we've been working, trying to work hand in hand a lot more.
It is their drinking water.
Hope and I think, uh, we've really developed our partnership and how we work with Lebanon. So I just wanted to ask that. Um, spectacle pond is partially ingrained in. I don't expect they would do anything. But I also don't think it's a significant number of homes that you wanna go wrestling with them. And the same way, maybe they get asked out of courtesy, out of courtesy. Yeah, I mean, the same way we would ask Lebanon, but I don't expect them to take anything.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I mean, we should ask.
Yes.
I treat them like they're my neighbors in Enfield.
Okay. Anything else on that for this evening?
Thank you for turning this around so fast. Thank you.
Different thinking about the penalties. You, you think about that more for next time?
Okay, I mean, if you guys want me to address the attorney now, I can do that or we can get a little closer. But that's really where the penalties are gonna be addressed, cause a lot of these are written in state law of what you can.
Yeah.
It's not our opinion or our thought process. It's here's what you can charge for this.
Yeah, I think at this point, the, the expedient path is to get, sort of agree on an ordinance. Like you said, a lot of the penalties are often tough in case, because that's what you're about to do.
It'd take a long time paying to get up to the cost of, you know, a serious septic.
No, disagree, but as we get the regulation written.
So we're open about it.
When we get the regulation written the way we want it, then I can talk to the attorney. We can talk about the penalties. But then we can also talk about that exact thing. If that's what the penalty is, then. How do we put a little more teeth into this legally and that can help us?
Yeah, the attorney can probably guide us whether an escalating penalty is feasible or not.
Is a home without a working septic or sewer an inhabitable home or is it condemned?
Well, that's what I'm saying. There may be other ways.
Because if you're condemned, it doesn't matter. You can't go in there.
And that's exactly part of why I was asking around occupancy permits.
Yeah, I mean, it may be something like that, that that is the penalty. You give them a one-year timeframe and then we.
That is also the advantage to making it a health order.
Okay, so we will move on for this evening?
Jim Taylor is online.
Okay, thank you all for the comments this evening. Appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
It's great.
Thanks for taking the surgery.
Good information.
Thank you.
All right, Jim, welcome. Uh, so first up, we have sidewalk plow machine award.
Backward in your package. You have a report from Jim Taylor. In the sidewalk plow, I'll let him talk about that. As you can see, we got a lot of. We got a lot of submittals. Um, they wrote the R F B in a way where it wasn't a specific type of machine. They wanted to see what was out there. it wasn't a specific type of machine, they wanted to see what was out there, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jim to explain what they got back and what they decided they would like to move forward, but you on, Jim?
You're muted, Jim. Are you able to unmute yourself, Jim?
Call Jim Taylor on the phone, I'm on mute.
We. I texted him.
Right, can you start running this through while he works on that, that's the challenge?
So as you can see, the prices, um, I mean, let's look in here, um, the prices range from fifty two thousand seven twenty seven to two hundred and thousand eight twenty. After careful consideration, they did look at sidewalk plow units specific for sidewalks, but they thought for the little bit of sidewalks we had, that that was not probably the best use of town funds. Um, after talking with their people and really going through everything, they recommend going with the Coyote VK four seven twenty offered by Pete's Equipment, which is a tractor that they can, they can move that off. They do believe that this will be the the best machinery with a snowplow for us to.
I fixed them up now, sorry, I was, I'm on my dad's computer and I have no idea. Anyway, I apologize for that, um, I was, I was trying to use the touchscreen and there's no touchscreen with this computer, it needs to be done from the track pad, so I apologize, being an idiot, anyway. Yeah, no, Ed, Ed said it just right, that's that, that's what we did, we were, we were absolutely, we were surprised with the response that we got. Um, that that's been very unusual in public work circles to have so many uh, responses. Usually we're, we're struggling to get one or two bids for something. Um, and you'll see on the truck that that's exactly the case with that. Um, so yeah, so the guys had looked over, they they've visited a lot of these um, dealerships to look at the equipment and to kind of get a feel for it and and what we're recommending is is that Coyote unit. And um, those folks seem willing to work with us because we didn't want to sacrifice too much horsepower um, for the width and they they they've got a treatment for the for the wheels, so we can kind of turn them in for the winter. And they'll be turned back out for for summer type work and so we'll get, you know, forty, forty five horsepower um, with a fifty eight inch width, which is great, I mean, that's a, that's a good, a good balance. A lot of them are twenty horsepower if you're, if you get under sixty inches, so so that's, that's what we're recommending.
That forty five is great.
Yeah, I'm answering questions from Lauren, any value coming back from the trade in, Jim?
Yeah, we will have, um, we, well, we have two tractors now, there's one at the transfer station, one that's been doing the sidewalks. Um, and so this one will replace one of those, we're unsure which one it will be at this point. Um, we're trying to figure out if the John Deere will fit in the transfer station garage. Because if it does, we'll probably get rid of the Kubota. Um, and if it doesn't, then we we probably, we might get rid of the John Deere. We'd like to keep the John Deere because it, even though it's fairly worn out, it it is a better backup for sidewalk plowing um, than the Kubota is, so. We would, we would market that and probably have you guys declare one or the other surplus and then that'll go on the uh, one of the auction sites, the municipal auction sites.
I move that we accept a proposal offered by Pete's Equipment Sales for the Coyote tractor and associated equipment to serve as the Enfield sidewalk plowing machine.
All in favor? Okay, we will break that, I will uh, just say that the uh, the purchase price of sixty six thousand five hundred and sixty one dollars is within the requested C I P number for the year. So that's fair enough. Municipal plow truck order.
So this was the op, this was the opposite, we've, we'd approached several vendors for um, you know, for some pricing and um, we've been using internationals, getting internationals from S G Reed and Claremont for for quite a few years now and and um, it was surprising that that he was really unable to come up with any pricing for us. He said that, I guess, international has a pretty long queue of of trucks that have been ordered, including one of ours that we ordered last year that hasn't arrived yet. Um, and so as a consequence, uh, international's kind of holding back pricing and and he doesn't dare throw anything out for fear of getting, you know, burned on the other end. So we started looking around and um, Freightliner had a, and Viking combination of equipment. They had a um, unit on the Sourcewell um, system. And uh, that's the pricing that 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 was, that were, that we got and that's the the unit that we're looking for. Um, we don't think it's gonna be too bad, we like to kind of keep a fleet. But the surprising thing is, is a lot of these trucks, doesn't matter about the brand, the components are basically the same. You know, Cummins engine, Allison transmission, um, you know, they got the same wheels, they've got the same, so it's, it's, it's almost a six half dozen deal with with um, you know, the way these things are built these days. And then the uh, the Viking plow and uh, body package, um, that's a brand that we've been using for many years, we're very happy with the equipment. And it does give us some interchangeability with, you know, pieces and equipment and we can keep a, you know, wing arm in stock and it will fit all six trucks that we're running, so.
I move that we authorize the town manager to order the Freightliner truck outfitted with Viking equipment through Sourcewell Cooperative Buying.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Good research, Jim, thank you.
Thank you again to Jeremy for working on the grants, right?
Yes, yes, and yeah, so we should say, this is the truck that we received a grant for a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
So it's gonna cost seventy one?
Uh, let's see.
Yes.
Yes, so the total price is two hundred fifty one thousand one hundred ninety four and we have a grant for a hundred eighty thousand. So yeah, so the purchase price of the town is about seventy one thousand. Yeah, twenty twenty four budget update.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you to CPW for putting those together for us.
So I just wanted to, to kind of bring the select board up to a, up to speed on a budget issue that I've ran into this year. Um, as you know, we have a, a pretty tight budget anyway, but um, in March, just a little bit after town meeting, um, I got a call from Mascoma Bank talking about our loan. Um, last year in June, we were supposed to make a payment and they called us and told us because we haven't drawn anything, that we didn't need to make a payment. We went back and forth a little bit with Mascoma Lake and ultimately decided not to make that payment because they said we didn't need to. We did decide in December to encumber two hundred thousand dollars of that payment to make like a principal payment only to lower the cost of the town in the long run. Um, but we ended up having uh, a meeting with our bond attorney in the bank. Um, talking about the delay in the public safety building and when we were gonna start drawing money. Our bond attorney quickly said we should have made that payment last year. Um, in talking about it, there was a couple options we could have done, we could have rewrote and restarted the whole loan process. Um, with interest rates changing, those types of things, I thought that was a bad idea. So we agreed with Mascoma Bank and the Bond Council to make that three hundred and seventy seven thousand six hundred and seventy six dollar and sixty one cent payment immediately, retro for the last year's payment. The bad thing with that is it put an unbudgeted expense on the books of a hundred and seventy seven thousand six seventy six sixty one. I immediately talked to my department heads and told them to not curtail spending, but watch spending. Um, I did tell them not to cut any projects that we had planned, like paving is a good one that, you know, don't take streets off that we planned on paving, but if you get a good price on paving, don't start adding more streets, let's try to save money where we can. Um, you will see as we come to the budget item, budget committee members that are here and select board that um, some of the training lines, travel lines, some of those things I've asked people to, to not go to some of the trainings they may have gone to. Um, I forego the, the municipal managers conference here and I'm not gonna go to I C M A this year, which is a few thousand dollars that we won't have to spend, but we're, we're starting to look for everywhere we can cut. Usually we have some money left over at the end of the year because of staffing, but as you heard today, we're full staffed. So we'll see how that kind of rolls out at the end of the year, but it's, it's something that we're watching and managing closely, trying to to come back in line. But with that, the plow truck that we just talked about, um, came in under budget, police car came in under budget, ambulance came in under budget that we all planned to use ARPA money for and we had a public hearing for. So um, we'll have to do some math, the plow truck numbers came in after I wrote this, but um, we have approximately, we think a hundred and fifteen thousand left in ARPA that has, needs to be designated by the end of this year. I think the prudent thing for the town to do, instead of picking another vehicle that may or may not come in within budget is to we've already taken that as a revenue loss, but we need to obligate it, if we obligate that as salaries or something out of this year's budget. It starts to open up a world of places that we can actually use that money. We can use it for the elevator in Whitney Hall, which we know is over, but we're trying to manage the Whitney Hall project. If needed, we can use it for part of this hundred and seventy seven thousand. And if not, we still have the, the option of it falling into fund balance and we can transfer it to C I P or whatever we would like to use it for, so. I'm not here today asking you guys to come up with a decision on that, I just wanted to kind of let you know the budget issue that we had, what we're trying to do to manage it through it. And then this, this ARPA decision that we may be able to make over the next couple months as we're, as we're moving through this.
And what, so the schedule will, so we basically have the calendar year to manage.
Yeah, this, this has to be obligated by December this year, or we lose it.
It's a really good problem to have ARPA money left over, you know what I mean, I think it shows you guys really have been managing things, so that portion of the problem is a really good problem to have. Um, I really like the idea of using some of those funds to pay police salaries, particularly because I don't given, and I'm not picking on the police by any means, we know every department across the state of Manhattan around the country is having a hard time staffing. So I think the expectation that that position might not have been staffed, um, was a very reasonable one and um, making sure that that gets, you know, I'm not saying we're not gonna take care of it, but using those ARPA funds, it's a very clearly allowable simple, straightforward way to do it, I love it and I, I think it would be fascinating, I mean, I'm not saying like fast overall, but you know what I mean, I just want, you guys have so much going on, um, to not have to go hunting for like fifty bucks here, fifty bucks here and the sandwich, I just do and get it done, get to my bug.
Balance, you both? Questions and comments from the public? Thank you for putting this together, okay, David.
Track of uh, the total amount uh, that we're over budget at this point uh, on a um, periodic, with an improvement periodic basis?
We look at revenue and expenses every month, but we're not able to tell them that, how much over we are, I'm not gonna say we're over or under. Um, we'll be looking at that as we move through, but you really can't start to get that picture until the last few months of the year, when you really see where everything's dealt failing in. Like I said, we can, we can nickel and dime where we're saving a little money here and there. But it always comes down to that end point, when we know what we're doing, we will not be, you know, replenishing the sand pile just because we can this year, those types of things, if we need it, we'll buy it, if we don't need it, we're not gonna buy it and then we'll we'll really have some numbers coming into the end of the year, but you know, that's, that's what we'll be doing as department heads and managers, that's what we do every year is manage the budget that we have to try to I mean, on budget and that's really what we'll be working hard to do.
And I would say, we used to take out tax anticipation notes, right, and this town was not good at managing it and that's how they got into trouble and so we know and one of the things that we've talked about a lot as a team over the years is about looking at our cash flow and look managing like Ed's talking about. Um, and one of our obligations as a board sitting in front of you is to make sure we're looking at the financials and giving a sanity check, so I look at, and any of you could do it if you wanted to do it, you have your budget right line by line and there's a percentage line of how much you've used for the year, so this is the very beginning of July, so we should have used roughly six percent, not, sorry. We should have used roughly six months worth of our, our monies on most items, right, and so that's fifty percent. Then you say to yourself, well, most of the plowing budget is gonna be in the fall and so there are little sanity checks and there might be one that's way out of whack and that would tell you, you might have a problem, so there are pieces along the way that are milestones you can track. And I'd, I'd say, and I hope everyone else feels this way, that we've been watching that a lot more closely than it was watched in the past.
Brad Ridge, is there a, a formal process that each budget account is looked at on a monthly basis and a explanation reconciliation is made? So you ma, you made the point that it's really hard to determine, uh, you know, three months into the year and you really have to wait till the end of the year, that sort of concerns me that we have to wait till the end of the year before we really know where we, where we're at. I'm just wondering if someone could spend some.
We can look really quickly at the total, but you know, we don't strictly line by line the budget everywhere we go, so things get kind of moved around throughout the year. So we look at each department, we look at the overall budget, we really work on managing expenses, but you know, at the end of the year, there's gonna be some lines that are over, some lines that are under and that happens every, every year, that's how our funding.
It's, it's just a standard process in, in a, in a company where you, you go through on a monthly basis and, and you you document where you are and why you're under and why you're over.
So the, the, the revenue and expense report that they put together on a monthly basis
Yep.
does do that.
Yeah.
I think what they're getting at is the challenge of saying, okay, you, we're, you know, we're six months in, we should be halfway through, but if we haven't done any paving yet, that's a outsized percentage of the budget.
Absolutely.
So I think there's a little bit of, both things are happening where, yes, that report goes out every month. Um, revenue and expense, and of course revenues are nothing until we get taxes basically, not nothing, but uh, right, no, you're right, revenues are not even either, but we know, right? Um, but the challenge is um, looking at those and, and, and I think many people in this room have the perspective of understanding like we're six months in, but we're not necessarily halfway through, right, from a, from an expense table, or, or, or maybe we're more than that because we already bought some.
So let's look at it the other way, let's say that we really don't know where we are uh, until November or at, toward the end of the year.
We have a better idea than that, I won't be able to tell you, oh, we're a hundred thousand over, we're a hundred thousand under.
What if we're two hundred short, what happens?
It comes out of fund balance.
So we have a fund balance and we have a fund balance policy and D R A one, has a target for that exact reason now. Should you go into it planning to make it, you know, no, absolutely not, but that is absolutely why.
Well, that's, that's definitely not the plan. As we, I mean, until you pass the six month mark, you can be making a bunch of hypotheticals and we can spend hours and hours analyzing the budget for almost no reason. Or we can wait till about now, we can really start crunching and knowing what we got. You know, DPW's our biggest budget by far and it's really year long, it's storm dependent.
Well, and, and I guess to say from my experience of reading those, those revenue and expense reports, um, we do have a, we do have a better sense than I think. At least I feel like I have a better sense than Ed is.
We have an idea.
Putting forth, because there's also the like, we know we need to have some, some cash available for when there is a December storm, right? I can't have DPW going, you know, nine percent every month, um, because December's a big month for.
I think the big thing is just that, we could spend two days or three days crunching this down and have a pretty good idea, but it's also a lot of time spent that could be a whole hundred percent different next month, we have a, each department and has a really good idea where they're at. What's left and they're working to save money right now. We work hard and I think we've done a really good job, almost to the other side, we get complaints every year that there's too much left at the end of the year and we're, we're trying to budget appropriately, but we also manage extremely badly.
I think that the takeaway from this though is those reports. I think that the takeaway from this though is those reports are happening each month, they are being circulated, we are looking at them, and those milestones are being monitored, you know, it's um, we're not going to hire a whole staff to do forecasting because it's not a good use of tax dollars, but we, each department is responsible for their budget and those pieces are getting done.
Anything else?
David, can you not over talk people, please?
Okay, um, next item, the health officer appointment. We have a oh wait, I skipped one, I skipped the veteran tax, sorry, veteran tax credit. Uh, this is the application that was filled out in a manner that did not qualify via based on the RSA rules. Uh, the town has gone back, so tried to contact them, I believe there's been no response.
There's been no response.
Yeah, so so there's been no response um to try to uh reach out, uh so the recommendation at this point is to deny that request and then allow them to reapply on a future date.
I make a motion, do we need the name or is it just the applicant?
I don't think we need to list the individual.
No, I didn't know legally what we had to do, I make a motion that the blackboard deny the application based on information that was submitted and the failure to submit follow up information.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
And as you guys know, if they
Yeah.
If I bring something forward, we'll bring it back.
Yes, I hope they do, and I would certainly be open to making it backdating if they come back with a application to call us. Okay, next item, health health officer appointment. We have a new building inspector who will also serve as the ARPA officer. Do we have a paper for that, or is that just?
No, yeah, it was all signed.
Is there specific language?
I think he just recommend.
Because we're recommending it and then the state gets to decide whether they're gonna I make a motion to recommend the appointment of Vincent Tersi as the health officer and or oh no, sorry, health officer for the town, I'm sorry, that's enough.
Second's up.
Like, and or, nope.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Uh, we'll see the health officer, Climal.
Yeah, see, one of them, he was one of them, yeah. Little bit different job, they go on a restaurant inspections and things that we don't do here, but basically.
But being able to hire a staff person who's already qualified and understanding of the job.
Yeah.
It's a tremendous amount of town, that's part of what I was saying.
Quite a bit of what we have.
You know, when I say I think people and people around town have been supportive of staff the last couple of years and kind of the budget uh around staff salaries, I think we're we're seeing the benefit of that by getting good quality applicants with lots of our positions. Alright. Uh, that, move the business section, administrative items. I don't believe there's any action, I did on this recent you just have to sign this one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, other business. Hmm. Oh, that that, we voted on that at a prior meeting, we just have to sign that tonight. That's the formal paperwork. Alright, other business, public comment, this is a time for the public to make any comment, please.
Yeah, John Nestler, Crystal Lake, uh, personally, there was a lot of action a few weeks ago in the lake, people living on the lakes and talking about zoning. I'm curious, what's the impetus for rewriting zoning that we start to accomplish and why we need that?
Yeah, so uh, a couple of things, so one, a a great place to ask that because most of the zoning is written by the planning board. Um, so they'd be a great group to to bring that question to, the, well, provide some context for it. The motivation is a few things, one, we found over the years that our zoning is um, not representative of what's on the ground, so one example would be around Crystal Lake. That's an R three zone. Every lot that's not three acres, which is every lot is nonconforming. And so one of the motivations is to try to have zoning that more is more representative of what is there on the ground today. And that's the same statement can be made in a variety of places in town. Uh, a lot of those lots in the village are nonconforming because of their size. Uh, and they were developed before zoning was implemented. So trying to basically update the regulations that were put in in the nineties and bring them forward uh to something that will serve us well going forward. Uh, and we've, if you look at like the number of um exceptions that are applied to for our zoning board, um, we far exceed typical moss, and that's also indicative that our zoning is somehow not not uh representative of what people in town want, but it but it's largely a planning board driven activity because they're responsible for adding zoning. So update it, bring it into what will serve us for the future versus what was put in place in the nineties.
Yeah.
They're saying the planning board is intended to go.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not broke, I'm not broke. When does the planning board meet?
Uh, they meet the second and fourth Tues- Tuesdays, Wednesdays, second, fourth Wednesday at six thirty PM in this room. And all of the meetings are publicly worn on the website as well.
Oh, our new calendar on the website's really nice.
And you can always call Rob Taylor as well, sure, if you have a question of whether.
Okay, thanks, I'm just gonna be.
Hello, Thomas, sure.
Hey, I just wanted to bring to your attention today um something that happened um in town, um, I, it didn't need to be reported to the police, but it was something I heard and saw. Um, I was at Mascoma Lakeside Park and I heard this sounded like an explosion that was not. Um, and then there were, a truck came into the park and was talking to some people. Um, and apparently he saw it, um, I was down at the lakeside, so my back was too, um, what happened was there was some truck apparently that was carrying, um, I believe, um, porta potties? And it hit the bridge um, going at quite a clip. Uh, whether that person didn't know about the bridge or didn't anticipate it or didn't whatever. Um, the only reason I wanted to comment, um whether somebody wants to take a look at it from the lakeside of the bridge when I was driving underneath of it. What I noticed is right under the bridge, there's like a like a pipe that looked like it had some cable in it. And the pipe is a part and the cable, it's not like open wide, but it's not connected.
It's definitely reportable to the police, definitely, that, if, yeah, so.
So, so that's what I saw, and it was like, I don't know what I'm seeing, but I want, and since I came here tonight, I thought I'd just tell you, oh.
Yeah, thank you.
So you think I should call the police and tell them that?
Well, I think when somebody, I I I think when somebody hits public infrastructure like a bridge, then yes, that's certainly something that is reportable. I think, I don't think that it's mandatory in this case because they didn't create a, you know, a damaging, right, exactly. Uh, however, it is, it is good to bring it up, can we just have um DPW contact, because those are communications lines, presumably that's the fiber that's.
Talking to the chief, police chief right now.
Right, okay, uh. No, you don't, no, you don't have to at this point, we 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 will make sure that it goes through the proper channels. Uh, but yeah, the people hitting, but this is, I mean, the state legislature is talking about um, how to prevent people from hitting covered bridges, right, so I mean, this is a common problem now, is everybody's just using their GPS and driving ahead regardless of practicalities like low, low slung bridges, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And please.
Betty Plaketh, I live on Crystal Lake Road, I have a couple of things, one is um, during the winter, we have a lot of people that like to walk their dogs on Crystal Lake Road, and when the snow melts, there's a lot of feces left, and so I had mentioned to Ed last week, if it's possible to get some signage that says, please pick up after your dog along Crystal Lake and also our Grand Glen Road, I understand there's also a problem there, because we're looking very seriously into the cyanobacteria stuff that happened in Crystal Lake last year. And I was wondering, is it possible to, I know Mascoma has had some cyanobacteria bloom already this year? Is it possible that the select board or whoever can create a designation for lakes that in the previous year have had cyanobacteria blooms and like, let's say maybe one for a year is not a problem, but when it exceeds one to go into, okay, now this is a lake that requires special circumstances and then have I don't know, just um things like lowered speed limits for boats or something that, you know, would not affect this, I gotta tell you that the amount of waves that come from boats that are, I'm at the north end where it's very shallow and very, not wide, and the amount of damage the boat waves due to my shoreline is amazing, and um so uh also I'm concerned about like um clearing up like drains and catch basins and the amount, I mean, if if we're looking at we've done a lot of work with with John, had a friend who um is the, can you clarify his?
Well, he was the head of the, probably the head of New York State Lakes Association, and he's the manager of Madison, executive director of Madison County in New York State.
So we had.
He knows his stuff.
We had a Zoom meeting with him, and based on that and the work that Glenn has done over the years and looking at, you know, their information, it seems like the biggest problem with cyanobacteria across the board happens to be what's happening with climate change and these downpours that are taking all of the, you know, flora and fauna around the lakes and dumping it into the lake. So if we're looking at septic tanks, which I think are also important, we have to look at everything that involves it, and I think if you're asking the the uh residents to deal with the septic tanks, I'm going to ask you guys to please make it a priority to deal with the culverts that come down, especially on Holly Drive and Boys Camp Road and whatever, and get those culverts to be the right size and to go into the, I don't know, is it called a catch basin?
Yeah, it's probably a stilt basin.
Stilt basin, and get that cleared out and um and make sure that that's happening, because you know, the 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 idea that, you know, back in two thousand nine New Herd University of New Hampshire did a study in with ALS around the two lakes and found that it's ten to twenty five times as prevalent in Mascoma and Crystal Lake as in the general population, it's a problem. I have a brother that's dying of ALS and also cyanobacteria affects liver cancer, my husband passed away six years ago tomorrow from liver cancer, none of these are really lovely to watch. And I think you're asking residents to do something, I think we're expecting the town to do something.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
You you brought up boats and their speed, uh we need to keep in mind that any body of water over ten acres is under control of the state. We can't impose a speed limit.
There's no way to create a special circumstance for lakes that are in trouble?
No.
The state owns those bodies of water and they control them, and I know Mascoma Lake Association advocated very hard recently for a new and updated wake rule, um, and it did not pass.
Right.
So I think there is work being done on a state level, but that's not something we can change on.
Also, I was just going to ask if if the there is, because I don't know, I know that I met hmm, Mary, I forgot her name, the head of the Mascoma.
Martha.
Martha, sorry, uh, association, is there within the town of Enfield structure, a group of um folks that, you know, you have the heritage and you have the this and you have that, that's just for lakes? Where, I would love to see that, I would love to see a group that's just for the lakes, that we know what um, Mascoma is doing, they know what we're doing, and then we have a greater body to go to the state and say, hey, you know.
I I will say the Conservation Commission does do a lot, a fair bit of work around water quality, including the lakes, including aquifers, sort of water quality all around, so that is one group that is working on it, but no, we do not have a a specific.
Lake has its own, historically have operated for many years and and highly effectively.
Yeah, the Lake Association.
I'd hate to see the town trying to duplicate their efforts.
Not to duplicate, but to.
But I mean, we we, I think we support your efforts.
So the forum to share is typically at Conservation Commission, but Conservation Commission isn't focused just on lake, it's holistic, holistically focused on the recreational and environmental well being of this town, so, you know, and that goes out to the tributaries and how we treat our land uphill, right, because we know literally everything goes downhill. So the Lake Association folks have been very good, um, we are lucky enough to have Shirley as our chair, and she happens to be well connected.
So I'm sure your comment, but the current structure would be the, from a town government standpoint, the Conservation Commission would be the most aligned with what you're talking about.
Situation like this where they meet and there's public, and when do they meet?
You can come hang out with us on July eleventh, right here at seven PM.
And and then the individual lakes, the lake associations have sort of taken on that role and and like some of them have gotten grants for staffing the um the educate voter education prop uh stack that are there in the summers and things like that, that's been the the formal thing. You you mentioned a couple of other things, um, you do have a dog ordinance. There's discussion uh around the dog food problem that exists in many places around town. We don't have a clean, simple, easy solution. It's a discussion if there are ideas, please, go ahead.
Say the ma, I did tell her Mascoma Lake Association created some signs and we're working with them to place them along Big Bullard and some of those places, you know, if the Crystal Lake Association would like to work with Mascoma Lake, we can get yeah, some of the, they can get some of those signs made and we can help place that along the lake.
Okay.
Do that, so it happens.
Because your lake association will contact, we're always in touch with other lake associations. Like we're also in touch with the New Zealand Lake Association, constantly, helping the board for nineteen years and still very active. We're on top of what can be done back to our lakes.
You're saying Mascoma has these signs already somewhere?
They just made some signs, I got an email like two weeks ago asking if they could put them up on some of the public roads, and I got them in touch with Jim Taylor that was here to help coordinate where and how to put those on, so they're safe.
The thing that works best is peer pressure, I'm not going to lie to you.
The Lake Association contacts the DPW to see where to put them, or I just want to know exactly how.
If you guys get signed, you can contact me, or I can work with Jim, because there's rules and regulations on where and how I can put signs, and we'll help you guys with.
Okay, thank you.
And then just one other, you mentioned the stormwater runoff, we're very much at the beginning of the process addressing stormwater runoff in other places, though I know DPW does resize culverts every time they're replacing them, they're not necessarily going around town proactively creating work, but every time they're working on a road, they are um bringing the stormwater runoff infrastructure, the culverts and all that stuff up to the cur, up to new standards, I just, I think that's.
But and you mentioned Holly Drive, we cannot touch Holly Drive, it is a private road.
No, I know, but up above.
Yes, and so, but they, you know, again, that's talking to your neighbors about making good choices. So they have recommendations from an engineer, right now they are not taking those. And so talking to them about making good decisions that affect all of you, because some of it is just about being a good neighbor and having those conversations.
But but I think your 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 comments are all
Yeah.
spot on in terms of where we're going, but that that piece of it is mu- much longer term. Figuring out if is there, is part of zoning, is part of it, other regulations, is part of it, just DPW work.
Well, given just the fact that like when we're looking at, you know, like a pie chart of where the big problems are with cyanobacteria, we were looking at it being like thirty five percent stormwater, you know, runoff and another coming twenty two percent coming from the land, and you know, septic was a small pipe part, it was a pipe part, but you know.
Yeah, and we're going to address the pieces we can as we can in sort of a methodical fashion.
And so stormwater runoff is on our list.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is important information, let me let me mention about lakes uh less than ten acre or greater than ten acre are bonded by the state, does the town not have a have any ability to recommend a change for something like Crystal Lake about motorboat size or this is, we have no ability to, we can say we like this on our lake?
We can talk to our legislators, but it would be legislative action.
We can talk to our legislators, but it would be legislative action. So, I mean, we can propose anything, you can propose anything.
And, and to put it in context, one, one of the most ferocious problems on many lakes are what they call wake boats. You're familiar with the concept, right?
Sure.
They are incredibly destructive and a modest proposal did not make it through the New Hampshire Legislature. And it was a modest proposal.
Really, in a state in New England that has such a hundred and fifty feet wake, even states around us have gone five hundred.
Right, right.
And it's alleged, I went and testified this year.
The town is, is very limited in what we can do in terms of lakes.
Okay, I understand, but that was a statewide ordinance. I didn't know of particular.
Unfortunately, we don't.
For particular lake, no, rather do it for the whole state.
Unfortunately, no, we don't have the authority to regulate lakes.
The lakes are owned by the state.
I understand that.
So stay, and I'll, I'll give you a good example, um, in the winter, which is not one to think about as much, people will call in and they're like, there are people on the ice. You're like, yeah, you're on state property. It's a bad idea, right? You can ask them to, you can't keep them off. It's like live free or die to the extreme.
I think you're not going to be able to, like, through the lakes.
As we look out and say, we're not going out there no matter what.
Yes, your best option is to work through the different, both lake organizations.
And educate people.
And educate people in hopes of getting something in front of the legislature and it goes from there.
Just do it from education, perhaps.
It's a, it's a tough problem.
Yeah.
And that, a, an email every time they're going to vote and conquer for people on the lake write to your representative. That's what you need to do.
Yeah.
That's what'll make a difference. And it'll be up at the initial year, the way folks want. So pay attention to those emails.
One way to get things started on the lakes, for example, Stephen, that's in both sides and was is a petition. Marine Patrol. You need, once they get their hands on, then move on. And we've done a couple of things by petition. It, it seems to have a little more impact than trying to go through our representatives who really don't care what we think until, until election day.
That's a very good point, and unfortunately due to funding, we haven't seen the Marine Patrol on any of our lakes in about four years now.
I saw one of those. Last summer.
Last summer.
I definitely saw Heidi.
They've been there. One problem, funding, and the whole state of New Hampshire has a major problem in funding. But we're going to live free or die.
There you go.
That's the bottom line.
That's it.
But that, that, that's the big key.
So can I make the gentle suggestion because we do have a little more work to do that we can move on from this topic? Because there's nothing the town can do.
But I think.
You know, I, I.
Talk to us about things that we can do to work together.
Yep, okay. There any other public comment? New topics?
We try one.
Yep.
Uh, last year we had a heck of a flood in July, flooded the lake like never before. And I understand the reason for the serious flood is that the lake, excuse me, New York State Dam Bureau does not have enough people to remove a board from the dam. And I spoke to them about that and they said it's possible to have the town take that responsibility. Have you ever discussed that? Have you ever heard that before?
Never heard. Never heard that and I'm not quite sure I believe it.
Think it's really.
I'll be honest. I don't think any town wants to take the legal responsibility of removing that board.
No, it's a legal responsibility, apparently, that the lake, the dam person would say, this storm is coming, please remove the board.
They have to consider the people below that dam too.
Of course, I should I consider all of that?
This relates to something I've been mulling over here.
I'll talk some more about it next.
Smith Pond Dam. We, we have a report from the, uh, these New Hampshire group that analyzes problems with dams. Smith Pond Dam is okay, there's some things that need to be done. Here's my question, who owns Smith Pond Dam right now?
It's private.
It's private, right? So we're just getting this, our own personal information, we're not expected to act upon it. If all of these things cost money ultimately.
It's just not, we get all the lakeshore permits.
Yeah, and I promise you, if you happen to own any kind of earth and dam, it is impossible to get through the state on stuff.
Yeah, okay.
That's right.
And there's some nice photographs they sent too.
Okay.
Good construction, good old shakers.
No, no, this was rebuilt, right?
Oh, yeah, the dam.
Private funds.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any other business to send the board to see me?
Oceans with you.
On the application, just saying that it's incomplete.
What is this non-public session sale of property? Okay. Alright. Motion to adjourn.
I'll try that.
Second.
Aye. Opposed. Thank you very much.
Thanks again, folks.